We'll start the planning board meeting. Mike, to read this pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, Chapter 30A, paragraph 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. WCTV, Channel 9 on Comcast Xfinity, Channel 37 Verizon Pios, and livestream wctv.org. This meeting of the Wilmington Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technology means. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656 and enter the meeting ID 985-9209-0025. Is that the correct numbers?
Yes.
Then press the pound and press pound again at the meeting voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during a portion of the hearing designated for public comment by following the steps previously noted, then press star nine on their telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All callers using this feature will be placed in the queue in the order they entered the prompt. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town website as soon as we are able. Okay.
Mike, do you want to do a roll call of the members?
Okay, members, please announce that you are here.
Rondi Holland.
Terry.
Present here.
Sean.
Sean Henigan, present.
Angela.
Angela Macalina, present.
Right. Good, we're good to move on. No minutes to deal with, no formates? We have a 7:30? Again, are you gonna?
7:30 is an appointment with 79 Nichols and Jill Mann is here to speak to the board.
All right, Jill, you're up.
Good evening, Jill Mann here on behalf of Golden Realty Trust. Jim Mangano is the trustee. We are here to seek yet again another extension, which I know I wasn't going to do, but because of the recent issues and my inability to gather certain information that was required to present to the board, I just have to request another extension. And because I'm not even certain of when I'll be able to get that information, I would prefer to be able to continue until your first meeting in July. If I can't get the information by then, I can't even imagine that there isn't going to be some lessening of restrictions so that I'll be able to get that information.
Okay, what's the next meeting in July, Val?
It is?
7th, I think, July 7th, right? The first Tuesday?
July 7th, yes.
And is she going to need an extension of time to July 31st?
She does not.
Okay. Okay, so I'll take a motion to extend the meeting to July 7th at 7:30.
I'll move.
Second, Rondi.
Okay, all in favor, please say by aye.
Aye.
I think we're good.
Just to cut in, each vote has to be done by roll call.
All right, so we'll have a roll call. All in favor, Terry?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Rondi?
Aye.
I say aye. Unanimous.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Everyone be well.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
So we have five minutes till the next one?
7:40, so I think we can, I think we can go, we're running a little on schedule tonight. This is 3:30 Ballerville. I don't believe anyone's at tonight's meeting for this. They had requested to continue to the June meeting.
June meeting, which is?
It is June 2nd. And I have a time slot of 7:40, if that's okay?
You're assuming that Nichols won't be prepared?
I am putting something else in the 7:30 to surprise you, I'll talk about it later.
Oh, this is June, all right, July, okay, I got you. Oh, I'm sorry, so 7:40, all right. So I assume you have a letter or some, an email from them asking for an extension?
We do, we have an email.
They need a time extension?
They don't, we had everyone extend their, extend the action dates out through the end of July when this all started, so we're okay with all of our extensions.
Okay. So I will take a motion to extend the public meeting to June 7th, June 2nd, June 2nd at 7:40.
So move, Rondi.
Terry, seconds.
Okay, all in favor, please say, stating your name, that you are in favor or not in favor. We'll start with you, Rondi.
Rondi Holland, aye.
Angela Macalina, aye.
Sean.
Sean Henigan, aye.
Terry.
Terry Boland, aye.
Chairman says aye. So unanimous, June 2nd, 7:40. All right, what's next?
We have a 7:45, so just a couple minutes before the 7:45, that 635 Main Street. If you'd like, we could take the site plan waiver. I know Andy Pajasic is in the meeting and it's fairly straightforward if you want to take that in the meantime.
Okay.
All right, Andy, John, if you could unmute Andy and I am going to share my screen to show the plan. Let's see. Give me one second, too many tabs.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay.
Hey, there you go.
All right, and here's the plan, Andy.
Yeah, so Andy Pajasic, Dana Perkins, here tonight on behalf of Ferro Ceramic Grinding, located at 5 Cornell Place. They're requesting to build an approximate 170 square foot concrete pad located to the rear of their building, which abuts Route 93. They're looking to install a dust collector on that pad. They have an existing dust collector now inside the building, but they're hoping to ramp up production and as part of that, they need a bigger dust collector and unfortunately it does not fit inside. So they're asking for site plan review waiver for this concrete pad, otherwise the site meets all zoning requirements.
Okay, I don't see a problem. Engineering didn't have a problem?
They had no comments.
Okay. I'll take a motion to grant the site plan waiver.
Terry Boland makes the motion.
Rondi Holland, second.
There you go. Okay, so roll call vote, Angela, you go first.
Angela Macalina, aye.
Sean, you're second.
Sean Henigan, aye.
Terry, you're third.
Terry Boland, aye.
Rondi.
Rondi Holland, aye.
Chairman, aye. Okay, you're all set.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Andy.
You're welcome.
Okay, 635 Main Street. John, if you could unmute the gentleman whose name says Tammy Tilton and Jackie.
Done.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, hear me now? Okay. Are you ready to go?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, my name is John Tilton, Williams Brothers Engineering, representing Jackie Welch. I think Jackie's watching the meeting. So before you is the proposed Jackie Drive subdivision located at 635 Main Street. This is a, this has been for you several times, and to recap the project, this is a proposed two lot subdivision with about 150 feet of new roadway and associated infrastructure. On April 22nd, we submitted revised plans in response letters to the Wilmington Engineering Department. There were no comments from the committee at that time. We had six questions to the plan and they were mostly related to the engineering comments. The first one was, we submitted mountain calculations for the pond two. We had a streetlight detail cross to the cross section on sheet three.
All right, hold on, John.
Yeah, you're not acting.
That's all right. So Val, did engineering agree with all the responses?
Yes, there was, I believe, one comment that was left over and that was added to a draft decision regarding the placement of the street trees. Right now, they are in the grass strip and usually we have them outside of, in the backside of the sidewalk.
Okay, so, so everything's been taken care of? Does the board have any comments? Do I need a roll call for that? If I do, I will. Angela, you okay? Everything's been answered?
Yes, good.
Rondi, you okay? Everything's been answered?
Uh, yes.
Sean, you okay? Everything's been answered? Yes? Terry, you okay? Everything's been answered?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chairman's all set. I'll go with what the town engineer has said. So I guess we can close the public hearing?
Yes.
Take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Rondi Holland.
Terry Boland, seconds.
Okay. Angela, you in favor?
Aye.
Sean, you in favor? Sean, you mute yourself? Terry, you in favor?
Terry Boland, aye.
Rondi, you in favor?
Rondi Holland, aye.
Sean, where'd you go?
Sean muted himself.
There you go, okay, aye, Sean Henigan, aye.
Okay, chairman says aye also. Mike Sorrentino. Public hearing is closed. Although, I, I did not ask the audience if they had any comments, I guess I should have. I assume there weren't any, Val?
John, do we have anyone who is in the audience?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. The record shows there was no one in the audience for this. Okay, you want to go over the conditions?
I would love to. John, maybe you could mute John Tilton's mic and see if that helps with our sound. Is that better? Not yet, okay.
So I did, it's either, it's either him, Jackie, or my.
It could be mine.
Okay, maybe, maybe mute Jackie too and you guys can?
Oh, wait, don't mute Jackie yet. Jackie, have you read these, have you read these draft conditions?
I did, yep, I had one comment about the street trees, but it was just answered.
Okay, so you're okay with the way everything's drafted?
We are good, yep.
Okay, okay, Val?
Okay.
You take it from here.
Okay, would you like me to read the whole decision or just point out the, the special?
Go over the specials and if anyone on the board has any questions, just speak up.
Okay, so I'm just gonna highlight the conditions that are not our typical conditions and we're gonna start with condition number 18. Since this subdivision does not include actual construction of buildings, we put this in here just to, just to be very clear that prior to construction of any building, building on any lot, all necessary site plan review and special permit approvals shall be obtained. So they'd have to come back for site plan review and if necessary, a special permit for the actual buildings to be constructed. This is just for the, the roadways and the splitting into two lots. We do have a little mix-up with the numbers here, so we will correct that. Prior to endorsement, the plan shall be revised to show the proposed street trees behind the proposed sidewalk. That was engineering's comment. And other than that, it is all of our usual conditions for this. We, they do ask for two waivers, one is for identifying the trees over 12 inches and the other waiver was for less than three feet of cover over the storm drain pipe. And engineering was okay with both of those.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
No.
Everybody's good?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion to accept the conditions as drafted with the exception that the numbering will be straightened out.
So moved, Rondi Holland.
Terry Boland, seconds.
Okay, Angela?
Aye, Angela, yes, Angela Macalina, aye.
Sean, you in favor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Sean Henigan, aye.
Okay, Rondi, you in favor?
Yes.
Terry.
Terry Boland, aye.
Chairman is an aye. All in favor voted unanimously. I think we're good.
Thank you.
Be nice to have this off the agenda. What do you get next, Val?
All right, we're running ahead, so we can discuss, if you'd like, we can discuss signing of documents. Yes or no? Is that fine? Or do you want to wait till the end?
Wait till the end.
Okay. Well, then I can?
What do we got for time? We got six minutes?
I think the next one is actually 8:15.
Oh, so we guess we can talk then.
Okay. Okay, so I, I sent out an email to the board members about how we're going to, or several options for signing documents. One option is for us to bring you the pages for you to sign to your house. We can set up a day where we could stop by and get your signatures. Or you can vote to start using electronic signatures on the documents. That vote would need to be recorded at the registry, so we would need to get your wet signature on a page to record it. So either way, we need to get your signature on some pieces of paper. But those are sort of the two options. We can just bring you the, the couple decisions that we'll have tonight for you to sign, take them to the next person for them to sign, or we can, you can vote to start using electronic signatures. We'll send you a signature page that you could sign and send back to us, we'll have that vote recorded. Then after that, we can use electronic signature for documents. The other piece that goes along with this is if you want to designate somebody to sign A&R plans or subdivision plans, you can designate one person to do that, either one of you or me, but that also has to be recorded at the registry before we start doing that. So we'll need to get signatures, wet signatures for that as well. So.
Val, this is Rondi, how are you, if we do the electronic signatures, how are you proposing to do it? To do it with a Word document in which we insert a picture of our signature? Or are we gonna download, sign, and then scan and send it back?
So we, I believe the town has purchased DocuSign, so we would use that.
Okay, I've never used that, so.
I haven't either, or at least I haven't sent anyone something from it, so we'll?
It's very simple.
There we go.
Is that the, you guys telling us that it was very simple?
Yeah.
I don't say that too much.
Oh, it's, it's pretty easy. No, DocuSign's good, I'm happy with that. So would that be, I guess my question is, is this intended to be a permanent thing or just a, you know, so long as we're meeting on Zoom kind of thing?
So it doesn't have to be a permanent thing. Let me actually find the, so the vote would be to actually accept the Mass General Law regarding electronic signatures and then you have the option of electronic signatures or actual, you know, wet ink signatures. So you have the option of either and with the designating a person to sign off on plans, that would be something that you would need to rescind, you know, send a letter to the registry to rescind that, to go back to having everyone sign it. So it doesn't have to be permanent, none of it has to be permanent. I guess it's, it's, there is a question of how, you know, how long we'll have to be doing Zoom. I think we can probably count on our June meeting being Zoom, I would guess, that's my guess. So, you know, whatever documents come out of this meeting tonight and the June meeting tonight, we expect to have, I think, two projects approved, hopefully. So it's, it's truly up to you guys, you know, I don't mind coming by with a piece of paper for you to sign on clipboard, or we can record the votes to put into place the electronic signature.
I don't think it's necessary for you to run around town and get all our signatures, that seems kind of crazy. If Cheryl had it doing, maybe, but I don't think you need to do that.
Cheryl's gonna love you.
I'm perfectly happy with the electronic signature.
I'm not, but I'll live with it.
I'm fine with the DocuSign, it is a very easy program to use.
Is it? All right, I'll go with the lawyer.
Is it very similar to the sign that you do in Adobe Acrobat PDF?
It is.
Okay.
Simpler, I would say.
Hey, that sounds good.
So then the, the vote for that, I'm going to put up on the screen, it is highlighted here. This is a piece of what we'll be sending to the registry for recording. So that would be one of the votes that you would need to do tonight.
Val, I just want to point out, my name is spelled incorrectly.
Thank you for pointing that out, I will tell our attorneys, I'll fire them, no.
All right, what do you want me to do here? You want me to read?
So this is, the highlighted portion is the motion that would have to, that would be the vote to, to use electronic signatures.
So if someone else needs to make the motion, I will accept the motion. Ron, do you want to make the motion?
I, Rondi Holland, move that the planning board hereby recognizes and accepts the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 110G regarding electronic signatures and that its members will henceforth execute documents either with electronic signatures or with wet ink signatures and that both will carry the same legal weight and effect.
Terry Boland, seconds.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Mike Sorrentino says aye.
Rondi Holland, aye. Aye.
Terry?
Terry Boland, aye.
Sean?
Sean Henigan, aye.
Angela?
Angela Macalina, aye.
Vote was unanimous.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll be sending you a signature page, it's kind of just a one-page, we need to get your wet signature on that page and if you could, if possible, drop it in the mail slot at Town Hall or you can mail it back to us. Mail slot would be great, if you can do that.
Sure. Mail slot and then shoot Val an email telling her you dropped it off.
That'd be great. And then the other topic, I guess, is whether you want to designate someone to, to sign A&R plans after you've approved them and subdivision plans after you've approved them. It can either be one of you or me.
So who do we want to punish? I don't know. No, I think, I think I should sign them, so, how's that? I'll volunteer.
That sounds great.
I'm fine with that.
We'll drop them on, we'll drop them on your doorstep.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board authorize the Chairman Mike Sorrentino to endorse A&R plans on behalf of the board as permitted under General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81P, and to endorse subdivision plans on behalf of the board as permitted under General Law, Chapter 41, Subsection 81X, and further move that the letter reviewed be transmitted to the Register of Deeds and reporter of the land cart as the notice required under both statutes.
Terry Boland, seconds.
Sean, how do you vote?
Sean Henigan, aye.
Angela, how do you vote?
Angela Macalina, aye.
Terry, how do you vote?
Terry Boland, aye.
Rondi, how do you vote?
Rondi Holland, aye.
Chairman Mike Sorrentino votes aye. It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. So if I send the two signature pages to you electronically, do you have the ability to print and sign and drop in the mailbox? Or should I?
I do.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, great, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, if I could tell you what the surprise is for next meeting at 7:30?
Okay.
We? Um, we, um, we need to amend our stormwater regulations to comply with the new, um, EPA MS four permit. Um, so there are some changes that are required in the regulations, some changes required in the bylaw. The bylaw will go to town meeting, um, at this point, um, in June. And, um, but we do have to change the regulations. We're supposed to be changing those before July first. So the June meetings are our last chance to do that. And we were hoping to make the bylaw changes before the reg changes, but, um, that timing's not working out. So, um, I will send, um, a draft, um, track change document showing the changes in the regs.
Will you have time to, will you have time to do that and get public input?
Yeah, we're gonna, um, we're gonna advertise the public hearing, um, so that ad will go in the paper next week. Um, and the next week, um, so we'll advertise the public hearing for June second. And, um, put the, um, document up on the website, um, for folks to view so they have easy access to it. We, we don't usually have a lot of interest in stormwater, but, um, some folks are definitely interested.
Developers are usually paying attention.
And I guess the other piece of it is that we don't, we don't really have a choice in these changes. It's, um, we have to do them, so, um.
So it's to meet DEP regulations, is that what you're saying?
The EPA, so the new. Yeah, yep.
Is there anything drastic in there, uh?
Um.
Major, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think redevelopment sites are gonna have to, um, do a bit more for, um, water quality. I think it's, it's gonna be a little different for those. Um, just, um, they're kind of raising the bar for those. So. Yeah, uh, but all of the changes in the document will be highlighted in the red in track changes and you can see those and we'll invite, um, Paul, the town engineer, to the next meeting to, um, to go over those and answer any questions for the board.
Sounds good.
Great.
Is there any Board of Appeals you want to do? Squeeze in one, uh? Sierra guy thinks she's got to do, or what?
There are no Board of Appeals. Very disappointing.
So a small caveat on that, um, there was a submission for the, um, for the Jefferson Road 40B project. Just recently, and that is going to the Board of Appeals to start the process next week. Um, so that will be referred to you guys for a recommendation, um, at the next meeting. Um, so just kind of a heads up that they're starting their public hearing process with the ZBA. Um, next week, um, on the thirteenth. Um, if you'd like to kind of follow along with that, um, the ZBA will, you know, ask for a recommendation from, from the board. And, um, if you would like any of the materials, let me know. Um, ahead of time, we will get them to you, um, ahead of next month's meeting.
Anything else on the agenda? I don't have the agenda in front of me, so.
Oh, I, I do have one other announcement, I guess. Um, so, as you know, we were supposed to have the joint public hearing with the Finance Committee next week on the twelfth. So they, right, so that's not gonna happen. Um, Mike is going to, um, get on a Zoom call and, um, we're gonna continue that to June ninth. Um, so the joint public hearing would be June ninth, so if you could check your calendars for that date. We are, we're hoping that it'll be a, um, a meeting um, in person, but maybe a little bit different. We're talking about having it, um, at the high school auditorium so that there can be additional distancing and, um, kind of a larger space to, to hold that meeting. But, um, more details on that, um, next week. Uh, when the meeting's continued. The idea is to continue it to a place and a date. So those, those details are being worked out. Um, so right now, um, the joint public hearing would be, uh, June. We'll continue it to June ninth and then the idea is to have, um, town meeting on June thirtieth, I believe it is. No, that can't be right.
I think that sounds right.
That's right.
That's right, okay.
It's a Tuesday, yeah.
Okay. Well, I can check on that, we'll.
It was on May, it was from, town meeting was from May thirtieth.
May thirtieth, that's what I'm thinking of. So I guess more details on that, um, to come. But I do believe it was gonna be the end of June.
Last Saturday in June.
Twenty seventh.
June twenty seventh.
Thank you, John. We're still ahead.
What's next? I know it's a couple of minutes, but what's, what's next?
Um, so next is, um, one sixty-eight Lowell Street. The, um, multifamily special permit, um, inclusionary housing special permit, stormwater and site plan review, and Doug Lees is here to, um, to represent the applicant.
Well, Cheryl's here.
That's nice.
Cheryl, you out there?
She looks thrilled. Well, you have to enjoy this.
Cheryl's mic's not working and she's blaming IT.
She can hear us.
That's alright, I won't blame her for the typos.
Alright, John, if you want to unmute Doug.
Will do.
Thank you.
And Val and Mr. Chairman, before we get started on one sixty-eight Lowell, I am gonna recuse myself from this as I'm in butter, as I've done in the past meetings.
Okay, Sean. Acknowledged. Alright, Doug, you're up.
Thank you. Hello. For the record, Doug Lees from Land Engineering and Environmental Services, here representing one sixty-eight Lowell Street LLC on their, uh, multifamily special permit application, inclusionary housing special permit application, stormwater management permit application and site plan review application for thirty-six unit housing project on Lowell Street. Previously in front of the board in February, uh, we're at the March hearing, we continued it and we're back again. We've had plenty of time to work with the town. They've been very, um, very generous with their time and working with us to resolve any of the outstanding comments that they had. I can go over some of the changes to the plans. We've added some parking spaces, some lights, um, some miscellaneous notes. We've, uh, got a traffic assessment prepared by T E P P LLC that showed an increase of six, uh, one, one vehicle trip every six minutes for the PM peak hour. The, the total increase in daily vehicle trips was a hundred and fifteen. And, uh, for the PM peak hour was a, an increase of eleven vehicle trips or about one every six minutes.
Alright, Doug, did, uh, you answer all of the, uh, engineer's questions?
Yes.
Is there anything outstanding? Val, is there anything outstanding?
No, there were a few things that we worked in as conditions in the draft decision, but, um, they addressed, um, everything that we were looking for.
Anything we should go over that, um, we worked into the decisions that we need to talk about?
Let's see. Uh, we did ask them to, um, install a, an educational sign. This was, um, it's actually Paul's idea. Um, i- install an educational sign regarding the, the porous pavement, um, that'll be on the site. And, um, educating the residents, um, there as to how it works and the benefits of it. Um, we worked in all of the, um, inclusionary requirements, so the timing of um, the timing of when they need to, um, complete their regulatory agreement, their marketing plan and all of the aspects that go into the, the inclusionary affordable units. Uh, we did ask for a phasing plan. Um, Doug, maybe you could go over that piece of it. It, it was just sort of a general phasing as to how they're going to construct the, the development because they're not gonna be able to do all of those units at once. So they gave us a phasing plan that was in the, um, the packet. And I believe, and Doug, you can correct me here, um, I believe the idea was to, to do, um, a, a binder coat prior to, um, any construction of the units, um, similar to a subdivision. And then, um, they listed, um, each kind of building, um, in a phase or a couple buildings in a phase.
Yeah, that's correct. We were gonna get the, the foundations, all the foundations in and the binding coat down before we started to work on any of the units. And then start the units from the front, basically the way the number start with you, the building that's labeled one through six and work a, a way around. Then do seven to, seven to ten, seventeen, eleven to sixteen. As we're going, as each building is finished and the driveway will be paved and the landscaping for that building will be done as it moves on to the next building. But there'll be multiple buildings under construction at the same time, just in different phases.
So, did you just say you were gonna do all the foundations? You're gonna do thirty-six of them?
Yeah, because really you can't get in to put the foundations in once you start. I mean, just the way the site is, you have to get in and put the foundations in.
Doesn't that kick something in as far as the town goes, Val?
Um, well, what they'll have to do is, um, apply for the the, I, I don't know that our building inspector allows foundation permits, so they'll have to apply for the whole building permit at that point, I believe. So, you know, that'll be, they'll require their building plans at that time.
All the buildings will be similar, so it'll be a similar building plan. There's different units, but.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I, I just was, I, I thought that the foundation kicked something off within the town. Maybe it was just a building permit. I just want to make sure that, uh, nothing's lost in the shuffle there.
What's the length of time on a building permit? When it's issued? I mean, what, uh, I guess my curiosity is as far as ba- the phasing goes, h- is how long the, uh, construction's expected to go and, you know, best, best of, best information available, I guess, at this.
Uh, well, I'm just gonna take a, you know, I don't, I really don't know. It's a, a good amount of time to build all of these buildings.
Right, and that's, that's my question is with the, there's a limit on a building permit, right? Val?
Um, well, yeah, as long, but as long as you're making progress on the construction, I think, um, you know, you would be okay.
Okay.
Yeah, usually once you start work on the building, then the, the timeframe is kind of stopped. It's, it's when you don't actually start any work that the building permit can expire on you. Um, I have other projects where they haven't got the foundation in and the building permit expired. But usually once they get the foundation in, then their, the building permit is, is held.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm used to seeing. It's, it's, it's that, it's the stopping work on a building though, right? So like if you put the, you get the permit for the foundation, you have the foundation sitting there for.
Uh, yeah, I'm sure there's a timeframe, but.
Well, it's the last building to, to get built and, and then we run into a problem, so. That's the concern.
Board members, anybody have anything they'd like to ask?
Um, one question. Will the buildings be occupied in phases too?
Yes. As they're done and as they're ready to be sold and the work has moved away from that building, then they'll be made available.
Should I keep going?
Um, I'm thinking. Doug, so go back over that again, not so, so that, that's gonna be a phasing plan? You're gonna do the first six? You're gonna do, come in to all the foundations?
Right.
Now, this is sewed, right?
Yes, all the utilities have to be put into the roadway and, and, um, brought out to the foundations. Then the roadway will be binder coat. And then they'll go through and start building each of the units, you know, starting at the building in the front and working around counterclockwise. And as they finish the, the buildings, the units, they'll pave the driveways and do the landscaping around that building. And then once the building is completed, the landscaping's done, they'll go for the occupancy permit and. Really the only way to build it the way it's, it's laid out is to pave the whole driveway.
Are, um, are we happy, uh, units thirty-three to thirty-six being the last ones? If, because they're right across from one to, one through six, which is first. I, you know, uh, you know, if we're trying to sort of go in in some order, then I guess we're gonna run into a problem no matter what, because we've got a, a circle. We gotta come back on it at some point, but, um, that just seems, that just seems really tough because it's across the street and I don't know if they're, we're gonna have an issue with, um, you know, pe- people occupying one through six while, um, construction equipment is, is parked in their front lawn. Or back lawn, I guess, as it were, for this one, but.
Yeah, I kind of would agree with that. I think you do the front, do those next, then swing over to seven, eight, nine, ten.
Right, and then you could go, then you could go counterclockwise. I think if it were up to me, I, I would just jump thirty-three to thirty-six to sort of snuck into the order.
I, I mean, I can see that. That makes, that would make sense.
Okay. Anything else?
I have one question on the, I think I'm looking at the grading plan. It might be the landscape plan. What's the change of elevation? You have a retaining wall on the left side. Concrete retaining wall, and then a six-foot vinyl fence. But what's the elevation change between the new construction and then the existing building that is over there?
The top of the wall over there is 88, and that matches pretty much the top of the existing wall. See, that's the septic system for AJ's.
Okay.
They would shop, and then the parking lot is about 2 feet, 2 and 1/2 feet lower, so the parking lot is about 86. So there's a little drop off. They have the wall around their septic system, and then the wall on this property is to kind of match grade with that.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Did we get a final architectural plan on this?
We have some elevations and renderings.
Okay.
I was looking at the rendering. It looks pretty good. It looks to be the same design as oh, the one by the bank there, Olson Street, or I can't remember. It was a Langone Development a while ago. You know, three-story townhouse.
Yeah, it is. I know the one you're thinking of. It's similar in design.
Yeah.
The rendering came out really nice. We added the windows to the side, elevation views that were requested.
Yeah, these aren't designed for aging people, because it's got too many stairs. They're all for young families.
Okay. Alright, Val, we got anybody in the public out there?
John?
We do not.
Okay, thank you, John.
Kind of memes I like.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Motion.
A motion by Rondi, second by Terry?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that what happened?
Oh, we might both spoke at the same time. Either way.
Okay. Angela, how do you vote?
Angela McAlina, aye.
Terry, how do you vote?
Terry Bolland, aye.
Rondi?
Rondi Holland, aye.
Jamon, aye. Sean recused himself. Four in favor, one recused.
We did prepare some draft decisions for the board to consider tonight. And if you'd like, I can go through them, through the conditions, either one by one, or I can do sort of the ones that are sort of out of the ordinary, whatever you'd like.
Out of the ordinary is fine with me. I don't know about anybody else.
It's fine.
Okay. Alright, so to the decision. So the maximum number of dwelling units is 36. And let's see. So we did, in number eight, we referenced the phases, that it would be constructed in accordance with the phasing document. What I'd like to do is add a condition there with the, add to that condition saying that numbers 30, units 33 to 36 would be second in that phasing, phasing plan, as discussed tonight. And then, and then number 10, as required by our inclusionary zoning by law, five of the units are affordable, and will count on the town's subsidized housing inventory. The unit numbers are 15, 19, 25, 30, and 34. And they'll be deed restricted and marketed as required by DHCD to count on the SHI. The housing units should include the same materials and finishes, except as specifically stated in the special permit application. The five affordable units would, would be, there would be a local preference for those, as allowed by DHCD. Number 16, private curbside trash pickup is required, and no dumpsters are permitted. And actually, number 17, we're going to take out the reference to the dumpsters, because they're not permitted.
Okay.
Snow shall, 18, snow shall be stored in designated areas only. And then snow exceeding the onsite capacity would be removed from the site within five days of the snow event. It shouldn't be pushed into stormwater management areas. Let's see. We're going to go down to 23. It's our typical pre-construction conference, asking for the schedule and the erosion and sedimentation control plan. We also asked for a plan or protocol for protecting the underlying sub-base and base materials of the porous pavement to prevent clogging during construction. So we want them to come up with a plan for, they, you know, they'll put the binder down, but how are they protecting that binder from getting clogged, because it's porous pavement?
Can I interrupt you for a second? This reminded me of something. Since we're under the pandemic, and I do a lot of construction, you know, are we going to throw something in there that all construction shall meet? Whatever the state requirements are for the COVID, something like that, or... I mean, all construction moving forward is going to have some kind of caveat within it, that, you know, moving ahead, they're going to have to meet whatever, whatever the new bylaws say, or whatever the state regulations. Well, yeah, they may have some social distances. You may have to wear a mask. You may have to have the wash station. You may have to have something more than, you know, more than a porta potty there. You may need all that kind of stuff.
I mean, if it's required by the state, whether it's in the permit or not, they'll be required to do it, so...
Okay, so is that covered under something general for
Yeah.
general regulations, laws, mask laws? Probably took a form to existing laws, regulations, yeah.
Right.
It's not existing at the second, I don't think. Well, maybe it is, I guess. It's not a law, right?
So the number two is meant to catch all of those types of things. I think it's, shall obtain approval pursuant to, and be constructed and operated in accordance with all applicable local, state, and federal bylaws, statutes, ordinances, regulations. So I think we would lump that into that category, that they would have to follow whatever
Okay.
laws apply.
You agree with that, Angela?
Yes.
Okay. I throw it at Sean, but he's, he's...
He's not here. Okay. So the rest of these pre-construction conference, all of the pre-construction typical conditions. Our typical work shouldn't start before 7, and should be completed by 7. No work on Sundays and holidays. Let's see. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, prior to the first building permit, condominium documents be submitted for review and approval. The documents shall include details regarding maintenance, stormwater management, operation, maintenance plans, and affordable units. And prior to the first building permit, they would need to have the local affordable unit application would be approved by DHCD. And then here's the, prior to the first building permit, the roadway be constructed through binder course. Stormwater management components associated with the roadways be completed. And then acceptable form of surety for the completion of the roadway and associated infrastructure. This is similar to what we did with the Spruce Farm Development, when that was approved.
So is that a typo in 36? Should that say 60,000? Not 6, what?
This is what the applicant proposed as a fair share, and when you do the math, it does, it does, it is truly a fair share. This project will have, will not have a lot of impact on the intersection in the corridor, but... So they'll contribute $6,000 towards the corridor. And here's the condition of 37. Prior to the first occupancy, they'll install an educational sign for low-impact development techniques implemented on the site. The sign would be reviewed and approved by me. Let's see, prior to the first certificate of occupancy, the regulatory agreement for the affordable units would be recorded. And prior to the first CO, they would submit an progress-as-built plan for the roadway and associated infrastructure. This is, 41 was one that Paul had us add in here. Prior to the issuance of the last certificate of occupancy, the sewer pump station located on the site shall be completed. The applicant shall coordinate with the engineering division regarding all outstanding punch list items.
Wait, wait, I got to think about this now. Prior to issuance, the last certificate of occupancy, the sewer pump station located on the site shall be completed. What does that mean? The first, the first house that's done and is occupied? How are they going to flush the toilet? I don't get it.
So the pump station is operating, and it is, so it takes the sewage from Windsor Place and further up Lowell Street, so it's in operation. There are some punch list things that need to get done, so that the town can take over ownership.
No, it's not, it's not onsite pump station. It's the station.
It's the station that...
Up the road a piece.
Actually, it's on this site, and the town will get an easement and take over the operation of the pump station. So it's on the, sort of the front right corner of the site. And it's existing, already been constructed. It's in operation, but newly in operation. Doug, I don't know if you know how long it's been? Has it been like a year or two?
It's been about a little over a year, I think, 15 months.
I don't think we should use the word "completed." I think we should use the word "accepted by the town." Isn't that...
So we, we had, we had, we had something like that in there, but the problem was National Grid has not put the gas line into the station yet for the backup generators.
Generator? So what are they doing now?
So right now, there's propane tanks. So we didn't want to put in that it had to be taken over by the town at CO, because we don't know the timing of National Grid. So we did have that at first. We talked to the applicant. He expressed some concern with, he doesn't have control over National Grid's timing. So we agreed that really, we want to get everything completed before, you know, this project's complete. So if they complete everything on the punch list, that would be acceptable.
Outside of National Grid, is that what you're saying?
Right, that's right. That's right. And the town does want to take over ownership of the pump station, but we didn't want to, we didn't want to tie that into here, because we don't know. That'll be the Water and Sewer Commission who are taking that over and deciding when to take that. They may or may not take ownership without the gas line installed. But we didn't want to get that tangled up in this approval. You know, if it doesn't, if they don't transfer it over, because the gas line isn't installed, they would have to come back to you and amend this decision, so we didn't want to get too, get it too tangled up.
I have the older version here, for some reason.
Right, the last certificate of occupancy, pump station. Well, it just seemed to me that if they were completed and National Grid hadn't completed, you took it over, the National Grid comes in, hooks up the generator, and then walks away, how do I know everything's going to operate properly? It's not going to be tested again?
There are separate agreements and permits for the sewer pump station. I mean, this project was impetus for the client, the applicant going through the work of getting all the neighbors together and putting that pump station in, and bringing sewer to this part of town. But, I mean, people are using the pump station now. It's, you know, he's filed the paperwork and paid the fee to the natural gas to have them come put the gas in, and it's just waiting. But they're two separate projects. It's on the same property. It's the same builder, but they're two separate projects. He has permits with the sewer commission, that he has obligations to them. It's not like he can just walk away and not complete it.
So there's a separate bond with the sewer commission? There's a separate contract and some kind of...
I don't know what the financial...
Retainage was the word I was looking for, the separate retinage?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know about those details. I just know it was permitted. You know, we went to the sewer commission. We got it permitted through them. It was quite a while ago. I don't remember if there was any retinage or any bondage, but he's obligated to finish it. And it is up and running. Everything that's up has been running and working and checked out by... So I mean, it's functioning. Just the backup generator needs gas, and of course, the fence and the dressing up, that's part of the permit. Also, there's a conservation permit on it.
Right, I think the idea here was to have at least all of the work that the applicant's in control of finished at the pump station, when he's finishing this project, so that, you know, he has his work complete by the end.
Well, even though it's National Grid, it's still his work, so that's how it works, right? I mean, it doesn't matter. He's funding it. He's, it's his pump station. This is a requirement of his pump station to have the backup generator, so... Just, the word "completed" kind of is a little bit different. I understand the difference between beneficial use, substantial completion, and completed. So we're not really calling it complete, so, but if the town is satisfied, I guess we're satisfied, so... As long as they've had those discussions, I guess.
Yeah, I know Paul was in touch with Joe about this, and this is the wording that they came up with to make them both happy.
Well, we can always not release all his bond.
Yeah, that's true.
I think this gives us the ability to to have a discussion when it's, when it comes time for that last certificate, right? So at least we have this language in here, and even if it's not perfect, you know, we can at least have that discussion at that point, and then, you know, the National Grid work is still owned by the applicant. You know, they're the ones that, you know, have requested. It hasn't happened yet, but that's still theirs. It's not ours. And I don't think, I don't think accepting the pump station, I mean, accepting the pump station isn't actually written in here, so, you know, that's, that's kind of the point, is we're not actually accepting the pump station. Not accepting National Grid's work instead of the applicant, right? I mean, that's, that's what it says to me. I can't come up with anything better.
Okay. Okay.
And that's, that's all we have. The, we did have a stormwater, a separate stormwater decision, but it had all of the typical standard conditions, nothing out of the ordinary.
Doug, you all set with the stormwater?
Ah, yes, yes, yes I am. Thank you.
And these conditions you're all set with?
Yes, yep.
Even the adjustment to the, which buildings get built, you're good?
Yeah, the only thing I would notice about that one was it's gonna move up the, uh, the building of one of the affordable unit.
That'll make us happy.
Yeah, I, I wish I had a. Opportunity to check with my client on it, but, um, he hasn't called in, so I assume. I assume he's watching, so I assume he's all right with it.
Well, if he isn't, he'll let us know, I'm sure, but that's what we're going with, so, alright. So I'll take a motion to accept the conditions as amended and to accept the conditions to the stormwater permit. As drafted.
Terry Ballin makes the motion.
Rondi Holland, seconds.
Angela.
Angela McAlina, aye.
Terry.
Terry Ballin, aye.
Rondi.
Rondi Holland, aye.
Chairman, votes aye. You're all set?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
John, if you want to unmute. Um, Bob Peterson and Pat McCarty. And Jamie.
And Sean, is it, make sure Sean's, uh.
Oh, I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, alright, good, that's good. We let you off the hook, alright, who's up? What do we got?
We've got, uh, one hundred Ames Street, and, um, maybe they could give a, um, an introduction to their project.
Can you hear me, Val?
Yes, we can.
Hey, Bob, you're up.
Bob, can you hear us?
Did we lose him?
Yep, we can hear you, can you hear us?
Mary.
How about me, Val, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Patrick, go ahead.
Okay, I'll, I'll get started while Bob's figuring out his internet, I know he was having some issues earlier. So, good evening, my name's Patrick McCarty, I own McCarty Engineering, we're out of Lemonster. We're a, uh, design, build, construction company, I'm the second generation owner and celebrating our thirty eighth year in business. So excited to, uh, to be here tonight presenting to the board. Jamie Garrity's also here with me, I don't know if he's unmuted.
I'm, I'm not, good evening, thank you for having us.
So Jamie's here and, and Bob, so Jamie is the owner of the property at a hundred Ames Street. Which is about a sixteen acre parcel, it has seventeen different buildings on it right now, and it's the home of Alco Technologies. Jamie purchased the property at the end of two thousand nineteen, um, with the intention of. Developing the eastern portion of his site to house, um, a building for his family business, which is Garrity Stone. So, uh, like I said, Alco Technologies is there now, they're in seventeen of the buildings. They're gonna consolidate their operations into fifteen of the buildings, mostly on the western side of the site, as Val's moving the cursor around. And that's gonna allow the demolition of two buildings, building number eleven, that's the U-shaped building closest to Ames Street. And building number seventeen, which is a rectangular building in the, um, back right corner, the northeasterly corner of the site. Alco currently has twenty five employees a, at the site, and, um. They've given us correspondence to Jamie that they anticipate that level of employees to remain about the same. They're obviously well aware of the development, and they have about six to eight truck trips a day. Four to six of them are tractor trailers and, uh, you know, one to two FedEx UPS deliveries a day, so. Pretty light volume in terms of both employee traffic and truck traffic for the operation to remain. The proposed project, Val, if you could go to, uh, the layout materials plan, please, perfect, thank you. The proposed project is the construction of a forty four thousand square foot, uh, building for Garrity Stone. You'll notice that it's rectangular in shape and along the eastern side of the property, and that's, uh, done specifically for their business. So they are a granite and stone fabricator. So at the southernmost point of the building, where there's a little jog in the building, there'll be two drive-in overhead doors. Where trucks will come and deliver the raw slabs of stone to the site. Inside the building will be bridge cranes that will unload those slabs and store them in a warehouse area moving, so we're moving northerly through the building. So they'll have a, a storage area for the slabs, then the, the slabs will continue moving north through the building to where they're cut and polished and shaped for your. Kitchen or your island, or, you know, whatever stone product you're, you're doing. And then they'll proceed again north through the building to the loading bays at the back. They're not quite your conventional loading base, cuz all of the slabs get loaded on, um, like E three fifty, so a van-sized. Box truck, you know, twelve to fourteen foot box truck that takes the finished product out each morning and delivers it to the various. Um, job sites, so instead of a forty eight inch dock height, we have like a thirty two inch dock height at those doors. In the, uh, in the jog of the building closest to the parking lot would be a showroom. Where you could come in and, you know, look at different sample cabinets and countertops, the cabinets are there just to display the countertops. Samples of slabs on the walls, meet with your kitchen designer and someone from Garrity to go through different stone selections, edge selections. All the sink selections, everything that goes into designing. Your new, your new stone product, and then there's some office space and bathrooms and conference rooms associated with that. The last two sheets in the set are a, uh, a floor plan and an elevation plan that you could look at. The site itself, so we're proposing to, uh, obviously we'd start with the demolition of those two buildings and the maze of. Fifty to sixty years worth of utilities that go throughout the site. Uh, Paul and the engineering division was nice enough to dig up some record plans for us. That we spent, uh, quite a bit of time going through and verifying all the different utility connections from building to building. There's a mixture of both underground and above ground utilities. So we're relocating the main entrance, so it's centralized on the site. There is a grade difference from Ames Street down into the site, so you'd ramp down from Ames Street. Um, which is shown here on the grading plan. You'd ramp down from about elevation ninety two at Ames Street to about elevation eighty four at the site. And then, once you get down to the bottom, it's relatively flat, all the way along this main center driveway. So when you get to the bottom, you'd turn right and you could climb back up to get into those two drive-in doors, uh, where the slabs would be unloaded. From there, you could turn left into the main customer parking area, which is by the front door. There is a overflow and employee parking area closer to Ames Street. We do have a challenge, so we have to work around some of the existing buildings to be able to maintain Alco's operations. So building number twelve, you'll see, is kind of in the middle of the parking field. That houses two large natural gas-fired boilers that run all the other buildings that are to remain. So not an easy thing to move or demolish and relocate, so we're, we're working around that, um, with the layout. So we have the, the overflow lot closest to the street, we have the customer parking and some office parking central. After you pass building twelve, you can take a right, and there'll be staff parking there, that's kind of in an L shape. That leads you to the back of the site where you have the loading area. There's two more buildings that we're working around at the rear of the site. Both of which are currently and will be used by Alco, so we're working around that to get to the, the rear driveway that accesses the loading area. So those are, it looks a little contrived now, but we also have, uh, we're going to be presenting to the board at the next meeting. With the revised plan set, uh, a concept that says, okay. If Alco continues to scale down their operations and we're able to take down those other three buildings, the layout all of a sudden becomes. Much more conventional without those obstructions to work around. The, um. Utilities, there's a lot of utilities on the site, there's, there's plenty of power. Um, we are bringing in a new transformer from, uh, Redding Light and Power to service the building. There's an existing water main that follows the right-hand side of that central driveway. Or we'll be tapping off a new sprinkler and domestic service. There's an existing sewer line that runs diagonally through the site where we can tie in in two locations. One kind of in the center of the building for the offices and bathrooms, and then at the two drive-in doors where vehicles will enter the building. Will have trench drains to an oil-water separator, and then a separate sewer line tying in further south on the existing sewer line. Uh, and then the gas service unfortunately comes in right now on the eastern side of the site and kind of fingers. In the east-west direction, so we're gonna have to work, uh, with National Grid to relocate and reconnect. Uh, particularly the building twelve where the boilers. So we had a, um, CDTR meeting on May twenty third where we reviewed the plans. With, um, Val and the engineering division, went through that, we also received some written comments. From Val and from the engineering division, we drafted a response letter to each of those. Ninety-five percent of them, it was just a yes, we'll make that edit to the plan, there's a couple that require a little bit more. Work, which the primary one is, uh, the suggestion of a peer review of the wetland delineation, you'll see at the northern boundary of the site. There is a wetland. There's actually a few wetlands, there's a BVW there and isolated vegetated wetland there, another BVW, and then off the paper, there's a fourth. Uh, ice, fourth wetland that's also isolated. So there's, uh, recommendation for a peer review of that delineation that was completed by Echo Tech of Worcester. And we've agreed to that, and, and I think as of Friday of last week, the bids from the town consultants on the peer review were expected. So we're hoping to get that rolling. So once we finalize that wetland boundary, we can make some other edits to the plan, mostly doing, uh, having to do with stormwater. So we had a good conversation with Paul from the engineering division and Brian from my office on doing a little bit more. On the stormwater side of things to address his comments, so. That's where we're heading, uh, I know this is an initial meeting, we're obviously expecting a continuance, cuz we have these, uh, questions and comments to respond to. We have the delineation to review, but, you know, wanted to introduce ourselves and the project to the board. And, uh, just let you know that we look forward to working with you.
Um, is, are you gonna be heated? Is the building gonna be heated from the, uh, that boiler building?
No.
Alright, so you'd be totally separate?
Totally separate, heat, yep.
And which buildings are Alco in, are they gonna?
They'll be in all the ones that remain.
All the ones remain to the left, okay, all those.
Yeah, plus, uh, plus building twelve is the boilers. So one of the comments was ha, having to do with parking on the site and making sure that we have adequate parking for everything, so I've gone through on the revised plan set and. Plan set and re, excuse me, labeled the use of each of the existing buildings, whether. For example, building one is the lunchroom right now, it's a locker room and some office areas. Two and two are, I believe, a production, then you have some warehouse, and, you know, so they alternate as you go through the site. So I've labeled all the uses of the existing buildings on the revised plan set.
Okay. And how about the turning radius coming in and out of the site, you know, we got big trucks, little trucks, what do we got?
We have, uh, from Alco, we have four to six big trucks a day. Um, for us, m- mostly ten-wheel flatbeds, bringing the slabs in, and they'll back right into the building and get unloaded by the bridge cranes. Uh, we might have the occasional, uh, tractor trailer, but it would be a shorter one with the shipping container full of slabs. So that would back up to the dock that's right at the very front of the building, but that's our only true dock height dock. Um, we did hire T E P P to do a traffic assessment, um, they went out and checked the site distances from the proposed driveway. And the posted speed limit's twenty five miles an hour, the site distances, uh, in both directions. For stopping in intersection site distance support speeds in excess of thirty five miles per hour, um, so I think we're good there. And, uh, my office right now is in the process of doing the turning movements based on the town's ladder truck. To make sure that they can come in, go through the site, loop around in between twelve and fourteen, and around the back and back out again. So that turning movement exhibit will be provided in the revised plan set.
Okay. What, any questions?
No.
I don't think so right now, Mr. Chairman, there's some work to be done.
So what kind of building we gonna have here, just standard block, but what do we got?
It's a pre-engineered metal building, it's actually the same manufacturer as the building to the right for the landscape company. Val, if you wouldn't mind going down to the last couple pages of the plan set. So right here, oh, if you could go up one. So this is the floor plan, so you can see the two overhead doors on the right-hand side of the page now. That's where the trucks would back in and get unloaded, then you have a rectangular three bays wide, two bays deep. Storage area for all the raw slabs, a partition wall that separates you from the warehouse to the fabrication area. And, and that fabrication area will be full of machines that cut and polish and shape the granite, and then they'd come out the left-hand side on the loading area. And then you see the rectangle that's a mix of the showroom all the way to the right. Uh, conference room, private offices and cubicle for the Garrity Stone staff. Break room, uh, bathrooms with showers for the shop employees, fabrication employees, and then a, a fabrication shop area break room. So that's the proposed floor plan, and if you go one more sheet. These are the preliminary elevations, so the, the, um. The top one obviously is the end wall with the loading docks, the second one down would be the elevation facing Ames Street. Third one down is the elevation facing to the east or facing the landscape company. And then the, the bottom one is the elevation facing the customer parking lot. To have some split face block at the bottom, some windows at the showroom, and then, um, insulated metal sandwich panel siding.
And for the top photo here, that the smaller bay areas, those are for the smaller trucks that will be taking it out after it's all cut and done.
Yes.
And what type of trucks will be going in there?
They're like an E three fifty van, but with a cube on it, not just a standard, you know, plumber HVAC van, it's a, you know, a twelve or fourteen foot box.
Okay, so the only, the only eighteen wheeler or such of a truck would be going into that second sort of bay area, correct?
The front of the building.
Right, then most southern, you're southern, yep, okay.
Yep, we do have an elevated, um, dock at the back of the building. With the intention of having a dumpster on either side for the waste stone. So that they can take a fork truck with a tilting bucket or a skid steer and take their cut pieces and dump them into an open-top dumpster for disposal.
You're, and you're saying that the smaller trucks are gonna be backing in that long, I mean, it, oh, I can't really see how long, but.
They could take a right after building twelve and come through that parking area and then back in, they could also pull forward by the. Elevated dock and back in the other way.
Is that the dock with the dumpster, I'm not gonna give enough room to actually get the dumpster out of there?
Yep, yeah, this is a zoomed way out at the plan you're looking at.
They're also just twelve yard dumpsters, they're small dumpsters.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, cuz of the weight of the stone, they're not a big thirty yard dumpster. Yeah, because of the weight of the stone, they're not a big 30 yard dumpster.
How are these two buildings looking next to each other? The building, the landscape building to your building, are you gonna be similar in height? Are you gonna be way above them, way below them? How's the grade look there?
Their site, so we're at elevation 90 for a finished floor.
I'd say there's probably 12 or 14 feet between the, between the the final elevations of the two.
Yeah, we're, our finished floor is elevation 90. And there some, I don't have it, I have a contour about five feet away from their building is 94. So they're probably 94, 50 or 95. So their floor is four and a half to five feet above ours.
Okay.
Am I looking at an old plan? I have 87 for your finished floor. Is that, is this a?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's 89.
Okay, I'm still.
If you look at the drive in door, there's a note that says 89. But the spot grade.
Oh, great, not finished floor.
What's that?
So I thought you had said finished floor 90. And I wanted to make sure I was looking at the right plan because mine says finished floor 87 on your new building. I'm looking at a sheet three layout of materials. But I see the spark rate of 89 that you're pointing out too on sheet four, so.
Yeah, yeah, that layout materials plan needs to be fixed. It's 89. If you look at the grading plan.
Okay.
So, so I want to go back to the, I want to go back to the traffic. We're, so we're gonna, are we gonna do a, we're gonna get a study on this? From our people or?
Yes, one of the comments we received was to prepare a traffic assessment for the site.
Okay, good. Yeah, you, I mean, you, you mentioned that the site, the site distances and everything and I, I I mean, I, I'm going back to, I don't know, a number of years ago when, when we were working on the other side of this bridge. You know, similar situation and, and you know, we had to
Yeah.
Really look at that vertical. The, the sort of site distance that was available there. And it wasn't enough where they wanted to do it. So I guess, I guess to, to lead up that question, I mean, have you did you guys look at that when you laid it? I know you're trying to centrally locate.
Oh yeah, Kim from T E P P went out and did a site visit and measured site distance at the proposed driveway location.
Understood. Did you guys? Have you looked at any options to move it further away from the bridge?
We have. And it with building 12.
They don't work for you. Is that what you're telling me?
Well, the, the problem really is building 12. If you move further east than where we are, you're basically coming straight down at building 12. That has to stay because it has the two big gas boilers in it.
Sure.
So if you come further east, you'd have to come down and do an S curve to the left and then back to the right to get to that existing center driveway to access the all coat buildings.
Yeah. That is true.
Yep.
Well, I'm, I'm interested to see what the traffic assessment says.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, he, his, he has a table in there for what the measured site distance was, what's required for 25 miles an hour and then what we provide is actually more than sufficient for 35 miles an hour.
Well, I noticed on the elevations, they had a sign up on the building. Is that part of the package?
I don't think we've gotten that far yet, to be honest with you.
Okay. Just have that discussion with Val. So you just do it once, you don't have to come back in later on. You know what I mean?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
And that way, you don't have to give you a waiver or something, just whatever you need, do it now.
Yeah, I think we put it there. I mean, I would love to have building signage, you know, if it's permissible.
Yep, yeah, I just grabbed that from the website.
Just, I noticed it, so just make it part of what you're doing. So she can talk to you about it, what you got for square footage, what you want to see from the road. You know, whatever it is gonna be, it's gonna be, so.
Right, if you're not, if you're not gonna meet the bylaw requirements for the signage, you would wanna file for a special permit for the signage. Which you could do while you're doing this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any thought about building L code, a new building and that way you can knock all those buildings down and you could build yourself a nice new building?
If you're lending the money for free, I'd be happy to. No, I mean, I think honestly, the, you know, all coat has been there in various names, you know, starting with Rafi and Swanson, they built the site. I think their goal is to stay there. I think realistically, there's a reasonable likelihood that they'll you know, the technology has allowed them to downsize their footprint and will continue to do so. So our hope is, you know, down the road, you know, as Patrick alluded to, we would look at these sort of three buildings that are, you know, kind of in the way of the circulation, consolidate all coat into their existing buildings, perhaps retrofit if we needed to and then, you know, clean up the, the site a little bit better than it is now. But right now they're operations, they just, they can't get back the space and they've got so much. It's really the infrastructure. They've just got so much infrastructure in those two different buildings that to move them would be astronomically expensive right now.
Just out of curiosity, Patrick, was there any reason why the building goes from from south to north and not, not to south, if you will? You know, you're entering one end and you're going out the other. Was any reason why was when flip flopped to make it easier flow?
I think we wanted to make it more attractive partially from the street so that you're not looking at, you know, eight loading docks and dumpsters.
Okay.
And just so you know, the, the way the, Patrick did a good job explaining it, but we have a very linear process in our fabrication. So unfortunately, the building really needs to be rectangular and kind of long and skinny. That's the best way for us to move the product through.
Yep.
And it's kind of like a snake. So we've got to start with the raw material at one end and it comes out finished at the other. So we're kind of limited in terms of how that building can really efficiently lay out for us.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one of the town engineers comments back to the traffic study was, he suggested or recommended that Green International review the traffic study as a peer reviewer. So that was his recommendation. If, if you all see that you would like to have the, I know we don't have the traffic study yet. But if you want to have that peer reviewed, you could discuss that now so that we could get that started. Once we do receive the traffic study.
I like the traffic study they did for us previously. So I'd be, I'd be in favor of them doing.
The one that Green did for us.
Yeah, on Main Street?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I, I think we should do that as well.
Do you want me to put it to a vote, Val?
Sure.
Good.
I know that, Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Peterson is back on. I didn't know if he had any comments or any anything to say before we go.
Mr. Peterson, would you like to speak?
Oh, we still can't hear.
There's so many wise cracks there. I guess we better whatnot, so.
Can you hear me now? I thought Val was just trying to give me the slip. So I just wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, we are aware of the concerns that were raised by Pat and discussed by Jamie. We've been discussing this project and working with both Paul and Val over the past few months and we're trying to address all of the comments. There's quite a few of all and we're working on what we can to accommodate him and answer all of his questions.
And we appreciate that. That's good. Okay, so we're gonna continue this to next month. Is next month enough time, Patrick?
Oh yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just on the traffic, I, I I think, you know, obviously if the board's prerogative is to have it peer reviewed. Then we're fine with that, I think. So we're demolishing two buildings and we're adding back a building. So the net increase in area is only about a 19,000 square foot increase. They're both industrial classifications under the trip generation. So it's very minimal trip increase, both daily and peak hour.
Yeah, I don't think we're worried so much about the trips, Patrick. I think we're more worried about the actual flow within the site and the location of the entrance.
Okay, location and configuration as well, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to hear what they have to say, you know, that's pretty typical for what we do, you know?
Okay, I mean, I, you know, I agree with you about the trippage. I mean, that's, you know, that's fine. Good. Who was gonna speak? Everybody good?
Good.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have a 7:50 PM spot on the June 2nd meeting, if that works.
So will we be able to do a traffic thing by then? What do you, what do you want to do? I mean?
Well, we, we haven't received their traffic study yet, so once we receive it, if the board wants us to reach out to Green International to get a peer review going, we can do that right away. If you'd like.
So.
So, hang on a second. So Jamie, so, so you guys I guess, you know, you could modify the plans and try to answer Paul's questions for next month. Or we could try to do everything together in July. What would you rather do, I guess?
I think respectfully, we'd prefer to go shoot for June.
Okay.
But we have the plans 80% fixed right now to address his comments. Really, the big thing is, is nailing down the wetland delineation in case there's any tweaks that have to be adjusted. Once that's done, but we're hoping that's coming up quickly because I know Valerie had requested the proposals be back to her by last Friday. So hopefully we can get somebody engaged and get that going. And my, my goal, I told my office is to have plans done by Thursday of next week.
So, Val, we got stormwater going on here too or what?
Yes.
So, do we have comments on that or how's everything going now?
There are, there are comments on the stormwater that would be sort of one of the pieces to, to work through before the June meeting.
How about that, Patrick? I mean, you, you good on that?
Yes, we had a, we had a conference, a video conference call with Paul and discussed some tweaks to our drainage design. So we're going out actually Friday of this week to dig a few more test pits. And early next week, we'll, we're gonna tweak our design and send it over to him for review.
So you think you'll have enough time? You're good?
I'd prefer to, yeah, I'd prefer to keep shooting for the, for the second.
Paul's very specific about the drainage, so I just want to make sure you.
Yes, understood.
You're comfortable. That's all I'm saying. I'm game, you're game. So, okay, what time?
7:50.
Were we gonna do the, the letter?
Oh, yeah, I need to weigh in on that if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Good.
But I just want to disclose that Green International actually is our, they do a lot of consulting work for us on other projects. And we initially reached out to them, but because of doing peer reviews for the town and I think they're doing some work on Main Street right now directly for the town. They, they passed on doing the traffic consulting for us. So I don't know if that's a conflict on the peer review, if you have somebody else you want to go to, or if they've already recused themselves for that reason. Probably expecting that this would get sent to them. I just wanted to disclose that.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, Sierra brings up a good point. We did receive a, a letter from, in a butter. Which was in the packet. I don't know if you want to.
I did not see that. So, yeah, so what do we got here?
I can read it, you can read it. I'll read it. So my name is Deborah Harrington and owner of Levin Lawn Street since the eighties. At the time, the biggest attract, attraction of the property was the privacy and distance afforded it by woods from traffic. Both those selling points are gone. Currently, I now see traffic going over the Ames Street Bridge, trucks going in, out of the business, the roofs of the commuter rail traveling to from Boston. Lighting from the business are visible in evening. Property at the end of Morse Ave now visible as is the fence at the backside of my property. None of which were just a couple of years ago. Trees in the wetlands are going over my little stream along the fence that was maybe two and a half feet wide has expanded. A brick slate BBQ once usable now sits on saturated land and in ruin as a tree went through it. Trees on my property have fallen clearing the view to the back of my property. My property is an acre plus and was never visible. This project will require drainage called groundwater recharge, something if my understanding is correct, depends on vegetation. Which if the trees are any indication is in ruin as they fall. My concern is the effect this project is going to have on my property. From my perspective, it will all be adverse, that is, that it will further span the wetlands saturating more of property. Mr. Garrity was kind enough to show me the plans and help me with a clearer understanding of groundwater recharge and what the expectation of it will be. But as a taxpayer, what is the town responsibilities? In regards to prevent the adverse reaction, I expect considering the results I've witnessed over these 30 plus years of ownership and how will it be achieved or can I expect nothing regards Deborah Harrington.
So where is she in relationship to the property?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, maybe if I could just break in, she, she lives, lawn, lawn street is behind, is to the north of the property. So there's probably, I don't know, 400 feet of woods and then her house is the first of butter. She sent me an email similar in, in tone to this letter. And so I spent about an hour and a half with her last week. Walked her through all the plans. I explained to her that the new building, the proposed building is gonna be set back about 60 feet to the south of where the existing structure is today. And she was happy to hear that. And I kind of walked her through, you know, somewhat generally in terms of how the stormwater management would work. And so I think she understood and appreciated that as well. It seemed like her concern was more generated to water that was coming from, from upstream, like from the Coke site and kind of, I guess, west of there. I wasn't entirely clear on, you know, exactly what the, what the concern was, but you know, there are obviously wetlands around her property and they didn't look to be overly saturated or degraded, but we had a nice meeting and I think she, you know, I hope she appreciated my time. I certainly appreciated hers and I left her my card and you know, asked her to get in touch with me if she had any further questions.
Okay, thank you for doing that.
Sure.
Anything else? Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll extend the public hearing to June 9th. At what time?
June 2nd.
June 2nd at 7:50?
So moved, Rodney Holland.
Every ball in seconds.
Sean?
John Hennigan, aye.
Angela?
Angela, Marcellina, aye.
Chairman votes aye. So we'll see you on June 2nd at 7:50.
Great.
Thank you very much.